Planning Board Meeting on three, three, two thousand and fifteen at, what we got, seven forty-eight?
Scott, all favor.
Aye.
Support unanimous, so the meeting open.
Good evening. Thank you for watching at home. Tonight, okay, who's up first?
Uh, we're no, we've got, we've got to do some of our own stuff first, okay, so.
What's up?
Well, we get an invoice from Amy Benard, okay, uh, okay, did you get this one?
For minutes?
Minutes?
Yeah.
No.
When, when did that come in the mail? Just now?
I picked it up for the minutes.
No, I haven't got it yet. She didn't email. I was on the computer today and it wasn't there. Normally she emails me.
What do you want to do? Do you want to hold it or what?
Well, give it to me now.
Okay.
Yeah.
We want to do bills, okay?
So, is that, how much is that?
Three seventy-five.
Okay.
Motion to.
When, uh?
Invoice zero, 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 twelve.
How much was it, three seventy-five?
Three seventy-five.
Okay, I'll make the motion to pay Amy Benard three hundred and seventy-five dollars as the Planning Board Secretary.
Scott.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Support unanimous. Okay, next time.
All right, what else? We got other bills in there? Do we have any can of bills in?
Yes, but I need to check and see exactly what we want.
So, no other bills?
No other.
All right, all right, then.
Any other business?
Yeah, is there any other business?
You want to just open and close the marijuana since nobody's here?
That's what we're going to go next. We're going to do, um, well, now, the next thing, okay, number three is going to be to approve the minutes, okay?
Okay.
Let me get this.
These are the ones we, different set from the question?
One, 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 to approve the minutes of one twenty, two thousand and fifteen, uh, February third, two thousand and fifteen, and February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Two, three, fifteen.
Motion up.
We got mics?
He's got the big mic.
Yeah.
So, you're not recording or you?
Yes.
No, I'm recording on the channel.
Okay, so I wanted to approve the minutes of one twenty, two thousand and fifteen, February third, two thousand and fifteen, February seventeenth of two thousand and fifteen. We'll make the motion.
Scott.
All the favors, you're going to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show the minutes approved for January twenty, February third, January. Who was it other day Jim?
Uh.
February seventeenth, twenty fifteen.
It's got to go.
Well, when you have done with that, I need to do.
All right, well, this is the order we're going to have next.
Skip Sheen?
We're going to do, no, we're going to do.
Marijuana by law?
Yeah, let's do the marijuana.
Okay. Uh, motion to open the continued hearing for the marijuana by law for town of Groton?
Show a motion.
All the favors, you're going to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair streets are here, we read them at the last meeting, so.
For a description?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, for the marijuana for the, uh.
Oh, got it.
Associate.
Okay, so as soon as we get Jim's vote, we'll open up.
Yeah, well, can you reach out? You need to read that, that next to.
Okay. You ready Jim?
Okay, aye, all right.
Marijuana by law, open the continued here?
Yeah.
Okay, so the hearing open, uh, we last went over lots of items, changes, uh, input from town council, anything changed between last hearing and now?
Nothing whatsoever at all, and I think the last, the only, the only question we had last time was relative to, okay, where is it? We said industrial districts. And, um, also, uh, there was a question, we haven't got an answer back from, uh, town council, and I don't know how we're going to get an estate approved that we go to town council on our own and ask it.
Didn't Joe, uh, statements go against that? Or brief disclaimer?
Nancy was supposed to be working with us on all of the new, the new by law and these two that are going to town meeting.
Okay.
And she was going to be the liaison with town council, and that's, we just found out tonight, she's retired.
Oh.
So, we, we got a problem at this point because, um, you know, we do need one question answered, and that was Joe DeMore brought up, uh, what happens if it was to go in Zone C, which is the industrial, um, section of the town, uh, this is where we're going to put them, we're proposing to put them, and whether or not the state is buying land in the industrial zone would have the right to open them. And I don't have an answer to that. I don't think the state would. I mean, the town owns the land, uh, I don't think the town would do it on any of their land. They have a right to do something like that. They really can't get into a business. I don't think the state, if the state wanted to do that, then, you know, would.
They still have to go through the process.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't have written the, the law the way they did, you know, because this is basically giving it to private ownership. And the only other thing is, does that mean the state may turn around and sell some of this land that they're buying? I don't know. So, I, I didn't, we really need to have town council address that, and.
So, who's, who's the new, is it Denise that's now?
If it is, I don't know if we're going to be able to get in there to see her.
Okay.
Because that's become a problem, and, um.
You want me to?
Well, I, you know, I'll make a, uh, ask the selectmen at this point, you know, you've left us with a problem.
Yeah, because we need a coordinator.
And we need to talk to town council on some of this stuff. And they had set up Nancy to be that liaison, now she's retired, okay, now what?
All right, so they have to appoint somebody else. So, you want a motion to fly to have you be POC, point of contact on that?
Well, they, they made that, me and Bobby, in a sense, but, you know, it's, uh, I don't mind continuing to do that. You all right with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But, you know, the selectmen are going to have to give us the right to talk to them.
Right.
That's, that's all I'm asking at this point.
Okay.
These are not going to be lengthy discussions. It's going to be a question, that's all.
It shouldn't be a problem, although sometimes it, in the past it has been, but I don't know why.
It's, it's almost, yes, and I think that's where it is right now, so.
Okay, so, uh, you want to fly the motion? We'll have, um, Jim and Bob as POCs to work this out and get some answers from council?
Let me write a few things down first because we just discussed a few things, and this is one of the problems. Sometime we, we work off of this.
Okay.
As a backup, all right?
I pause, three, one commissioner, wait.
Yeah, you want to knock that down, go ahead.
Okay, we'll put the tape on pause.
Sometimes I think the selectmen really don't understand what can happen if you don't do something. And, you know, it's, it's, all you got to do is go in a wrong neighborhood with something and don't know about it, know about it fast.
Well, this house industry got from a mere two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as an initial up to three million plus because, yeah, we don't need to get that. Meanwhile, seventeen years later, after we picked it, so, um, Scott, um, you didn't initially plan a, a loop system?
No.
Okay, any reason?
Usually.
Yeah, usually, for cleanouts and, and everything, okay. I take it you picked up on that quick?
Okay, I'm gonna, we back.
That'd be nice, but no, that was strictly the water department. It's within the allowed dead end length, so.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you know, just that for water pressure, Bob can speak, but actually both Bobs can speak for this, for water pressure, cleanouts, and then at the end of the day, the sediment, it just piles up at the end of that thing unless you put like a hundred footer plus, I'm sure there's a distance, but we've had problems with that before.
Let's finish this and then we'll.
Ready?
Yeah, let me get through these two bylaws. Turn it back to one.
On.
Are there any questions at this point about the marijuana by law?
No.
None noted.
None noted. Okay, and make a motion to continue the hearing.
Yeah, did we fly the motion for POC for you two? Did you get answers? Did you write that one down?
I, I did that, okay, we want to do a motion on that.
Yeah, just do a motion on it. Make a motion to, uh, have Jim and Bob point of contact for marijuana by law for, to town council.
Show a motion.
Second.
Second, all the favors, you're going to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. About done with? Any question?
Now, the continuance, we probably shouldn't continue it to the seventeenth, we probably should skip to the third Tuesday of, uh, next month.
And Jim, you got to get some answers.
Even after, right.
Yeah, so, so that would be, uh.
The thirty-first.
Got it, okay.
Well, that's March, we're only two months.
Yeah.
We have, well.
So, the April?
You, you getting into April, I think is the cutoff is, is the end of March.
It's the first meeting in April.
I, I don't know if you want to push, you know, push it then. I would do it the next meeting.
All right, so, okay, we'll open, at least we'll.
Well, the thirty-first is the last Tuesday in March.
Right, but we have a meeting already scheduled.
We got a schedule to the seventh.
So, we'll continue to the seventeenth, get an update, see what we got.
Yep, and then drop it.
So, uh, motion to have the marijuana by law hearing continue to March seventeenth?
Show a motion.
Second.
All the favors, you're going to say an aye?
Aye.
Show the vote unanimous. Motion carried, meeting continued to March seventeenth. Okay, so we got those two done, those two done.
Second one, second one is the associate number of the planning board.
Yeah, do we have a volunteer for that? Hold the bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay. Nobody did research on that to find, I could have swore we accepted that, Jim, twenty years ago.
And it first, it would have a section in the administration part of the bylaw that was mine.
Not necessarily, because back in that, back in those days, they didn't record it, but I swear we did that for the two, we used to call it an alternate member because we needed it at that time, and it was twenty years ago. I mean, we'll just float it again, but, um, you know who would know? Yeah. The down.
It, it would have to be in the bylaw. It's not in the bylaw, Wally, that's the problem. You, you can, you can pass on the town meeting if you don't follow through on it, they can get in on the bylaw.
Well, I, I think they did, and they just, nobody just put it in the book, but, and that's okay, we'll, we'll just go with that one. So, is that, any questions on this one? We're just, uh, we're floating it in as written per, and that's going to lie?
No, but there were a couple of inquiries on Facebook on what, because when I posted it, I just put, continue hearing for associate, and they didn't know what it was about. So, maybe if you just give a little brief why we need an associate.
One, one of, the, the chief number one reason that we need an associate member is, uh, when you go on a special, um, what do we call it?
Special permit.
Special permit, and a member either isn't a butter to the permit being requested, cannot serve, or may have an association with a person, they cannot serve in that regard. They have to step out. That leaves you with four members, and as we know, on special permits, you're going to have four out of five voting yes to pass these special permit. Uh, so, and illness is another situation, you know, out of town for a while, uh, is another situation, so that realistically, uh, we've always needed this associate number, uh, in terms of, um, special permits, and, uh, we need to get it into the bylaw is what we need. Uh, the zoning board of appeals, it's in the bylaw for them, they get, they have three, not one, three associate numbers. So, you know, it, it kind of makes you wonder why they said that in forty-eight for the board of appeals, and what they said about the planning board.
Bigger board though, right?
Yeah, it, well, no, it's, it's five, five members on each. That's, that's what's so crazy about it. It doesn't make sense. But, the reality is, uh, we need one of these things, or something on a special permit may go through because we don't have enough votes. Simple as that. And, um, so, at this point, hopefully that answers questions of why we need an associate number. If not, you know, please come to the next meeting, ask the questions, whatever you got, come to the meeting. That's why we're doing this. Telephone to marijuana by law and on the associate number by law.
You want to continue that to the seventh as well?
If there's anyone out there in the town resident, uh, please send a letter to the, uh, planning board or the selectmen requesting to get on the, you know, board of, planning board as an associate.
So, motion, uh, continue?
Hold on, this is one of the, we need backup on that stuff. I hate to tell you what, what I go through with minutes, sorry.
Fast forward, rewind, fast forward, rewind.
Yeah. Okay, so we want to make a motion to continue the hearing for the, uh, associate number, uh, two, three, seventeen, fifteen.
Show a motion, second.
Okay, Andrew, second. All the favors, you're going to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous, show the motion carried, hearing continued, March seventh, for the associate number. That brings us to Skip Sheen. Or do you have anything else, Tim?
Nope.
Okay, so Skip Sheen, um, we're going to continue hearing for this one? For the definitive? Okay, motion to open the continued hearing for definitive, Skip Sheen, wait.
Show a motion.
Second.
All the favors, you're going to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, show the, motion carried, uh, hearing opened up as, uh, twenty oh seven, eight oh seven, uh, excuse me. Uh, have before here from the, uh, town of Groton Water and Sewer on project, they referenced the, uh, eight inch water main, and they would like the loop system. It looks like all parties have agreed to do so, also, judging from this letter, the, uh, exact location, the test pits, and also some, uh, variance if needed to mitigate the issue onto that, so, um, and you got to connect up, sail and loop out, back up?
Yeah, sail and down like this here.
Okay, and that's, that's stubbed already, right?
Out here?
Yeah.
Yeah, they said it's, it's in the circle.
Yeah, okay, so, so, stubbed up there, all right, and, so you're going to pick it up from Dartmouth and bring it, bring it forward and connect that out to sail?
Yeah, well, right, right up and sail and down to Dartmouth.
Okay, so up and down, okay, fair. That answers that question. Okay, and what do we have for, uh, housekeeping issues? Have they all been resolved or anything?
Pretty much, yeah, the, uh, technical issues have kind of been worked through, um, last meeting, we discussed, uh, some minor technical issues and worked through the waivers. Um, so if it pleased the board, you know, with your approval, I think we're at a point now where we can start discussing conditions and, I can close the hearing.
Okay, so what are you presenting, uh, for this evening?
Uh, just the items that we talked about last week or all at the last meeting, um, there were some details that Mr. Eric Alien had suggested, as far as roadway cross-section.
Right.
Um, and then there were some notes about changing the underground electric from one side of the road to the other, uh, location of the street light, uh, those kinds of housekeeping matters. Uh, but the bigger items, um, nothing major, but, um, you know, again, procedural. There've been some discussions with Water and Sewer and with Water Health, um, the Water Health generally has no issues with the plan, just that Title Five and local rules have to follow for the home construction. So, I understand there've been some discussions, but they need to respond in writing, so, uh, we just need to get a letter from the Water Health, you know, in the next week or so, so, uh, we have that for the file. And then there's just some notations that need to go on the drawing that will, uh, shake themselves out as we move forward. The, uh, resolution of the land disturbance permit, uh, right now, that's conditionally approved, there's some housekeeping items, uh, lower reconstruction estimate, and, uh, revised erosion control document from, uh, Mr. Harbory's, but that won't finish that off, referred to on the record of the plans. And whether or not there'll be, uh, a special permit process for the aqua protection zone. I know we discussed, uh, a waiver uh, two weeks ago that turned, um, a larger landscape idol in the cul-de-sac that might put them under the threshold for review, so I was waiting on some numbers from the design engineer as to whether or not that percentage was going to fall under the threshold, uh, and if so, then no action need be taken. But if it does come up larger than the twenty-five percent coverage, or the fifteen percent coverage, excuse me, um, there was going to be a pervious sidewalk installed, so details for that construction would have to be added to the drawing. If that stood up, it's going to be taken. And then the final drawings, once all these revisions are made, uh, need to be stamped by the appropriate professional. Some of the drawings are stamped, some are not, um, most notably the structural drawing for the retaining wall, uh, so, we're all set with that. A final set, uh, to check off all these items, uh, will be stamped by, through the engineer survey or the structural engineer. Uh, and then again, some of these revisions about the gravel base for the roadway cross-section, um, the revisions to the plans that will include the extension of the water main out to Dartmouth Street, meeting with, uh, the water department recommendations. And, um, understanding that the, um, law three requires proposed grading to conform to the buildable area as part of the zoning by law, uh, so as long as, there is a note on the plan, but just so that everyone in the board is aware that there'll be a, uh, requirement that, uh, before a building permit is issued, that, that will have to be certified by a surveyor, that it has the appropriate buildable area to be built on. So, those are basically the conditions that we would recommend that we consider.
So, what's the, um, timeline, Scott, that you can get all of these things completed?
I don't know, have them wrapped up next week or even the week out, or, uh.
All right, can, um.
It's, it's all longer than it is, it's all my.
Because it, it sounds like a lot of departments that have to get, piece together, we got Water Health, we got Water, we got.
Well, we have, yeah, we have comments from, we have comments from Water and Sewer, but the Water Health is the only one in town that needs to do it by writing.
Okay.
So, as long as they take care of that in the next couple of weeks, it's, it's fine.
So, typically at this juncture with the definitive, you know, you can close up the hearing, uh, pending um, all the results of the housekeeping items, plans, stamp plans, approvals, et cetera, et cetera, okay, and then once that's all presented and a green light from the review engineer, then we go into, um, on approvals, um, and conditions and waivers, because it's, it's kind of hard without all that to throw the list together. Do you have a list of, uh, suggested waivers at this point?
Uh, just what I read.
Just read out?
I could provide that to the board, but.
Can you get everything done by the next, uh, by the next meeting and we can just go right through the waiver list?
Unless the waiver's been approved, it's, it's been on the table.
Okay.
You were late that day.
We already approved those.
We already.
Yeah, waivers have been acted on two weeks ago.
So, where should, do you have a final review letter that isn't sent? Is that here?
Um, last, last time we had a, a review letter in and identified just a few remaining items.
Okay.
Um, and these are the items that are left as of today.
The, the one thing that's crucial is we need to get the bond set up. I'll be emailing the bond, uh, forms to you, but you need to get, go over with the cabinet engineer.
Yeah.
Get a proper price, and then it's, uh, contingency of twenty percent of that, we tack on in case you go belly up or whatever, and we have to finish the project. That has to be voted on and approved of the final price. Normally, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars a foot. That covers everything, but we'll go over each one, and like I was telling you, we can reduce the bond or whichever you, uh, do, the cash book or whatever, as the things are done, we can reduce it. But that has to be all done and voted on. We have to agree to the price, the bond and everything else, and vote on it and accept it before we can really finalize everything. And then when we have to draw up the memorandum of decision, there's twenty, twenty-one days.
Right, from the day of approval. So, on the seventeenth, can we get a, a final sign off?
If everything comes in, yeah.
Yeah, right. So, so flavor of the board, at this point, we can, uh, we can close the hearing out pending, um, final documentation to be turned in.
Yeah, that's what we should do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, and then just at the next meeting, run through everything on the, if everything's in, that we're looking at.
Yeah, because I think the thinking was that, you know, we'd all discuss anything that's left and make one final change to the drawings, so we're all dealing with the last sheet of paper.
Everybody in, in unison on that? Yeah, okay. So, if, if that's the case, then we can get it done in a couple of weeks, and, or if it goes to April, at least we'll get the, get the closeout and and see if there's no one here for the hearing, so it's just final housekeeping items that are necessary. Uh, what was the road construction estimate that you had?
We're, we're just going through it right now.
What was the first guess?
Well, I, I was told to go off state.
Yeah.
State, uh.
Was it a hundred, two hundred, three hundred?
No, it's a little more than that.
Four?
Oh, it depends if you, like, I'll give you an example. The state uses like ninety-seven dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, a foot for the water. The water department uses seventy dollars.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay, but what's your, uh, what do we use, three hundred, three hundred dollars a foot? Back up?
Yeah, the line from two fifty to three fifty, if that was.
I don't know, probably is in three fifty.
Utilities and so.
Well, I was just figuring, based upon that, what, what was your number?
I, I'm not complete, uh, I'm going to, because I, I, he was mentioned go off state.
Yeah.
Pretty in-depth.
What's the road length? Six hundred?
Depends on the waivers too.
Six hundred feet?
No, it's, it's like four.
Four fifty to the center of the cul-de-sac.
All right, see that?
But then you got the, uh, extra water on off-site, so.
So, so we're talking under two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What was crime checks? Three, three hundred sixteen?
Yeah, we were.
There's a lot more than it should have been, but.
Yeah, well, he has some.
It's a tricky site, so.
Yeah, okay, so, if that's, flavor of the board, when we have everything, we need a, we need a motion to close up the hearing.
I, I just have a question about, um, you mentioned the center of the cul-de-sac, that doesn't limit the requirement of the land disturbance? We talked about a, a pervious sidewalk, that would be a substitute?
Pervious, correct, because the, it's so close to the fifteen percent threshold, um, that a couple of square feet either way will put it under, and it would not need review, and they could just do standard construction of the roadway and the sidewalk.
You're not talking a gravel sidewalk?
No, it's pervious pavement, so it's, got some openings so that water can filter.
More than I have seen.
Yeah.
More strict construction standard.
Is that more expensive than in progress?
A little, yeah.
We talked about doing, uh, a, a while ago to actually do a, a demo of it. Where were we going to do that? At the ball field or something? We talked about doing, uh, a, a while ago to actually do a, a demo of it, where were we gonna do that, at the ball field or something? Bob?
I don't know.
We were gonna, we were gonna put that in somewhere and, and run a test on it, and, because it, it's absorbed in for ground recharge.
At that time, they were actually doing it at U and H, and we were invited down to watch them do it. I don't think we were doing it in the town.
No, we were, they wanted a, um, a, a place to give it a test run, and, um, just to see what it worked out, and, and I think, uh, Washington Park was the target site for that for a small strip or something. Uh, it obviously never happened, but that was, that was a while back, you know, that was coming in, so, anyway.
This might be a good test case, but the key is, you know, doing the construction correctly and then following up with the maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, maintenance is huge. We've done a lot of test things here that are great ideas, but they, later, maybe don't pan out, so... So, um, okay, motion to, uh, fly to close the hearing for Skip Sheen, wait.
Show motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, is he gonna say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, show the vote unanimous, show the hearing closed for Skip Sheen, wait. Um, March, uh, seventeen, next meeting, give us an update on the, uh, remaining items to be completed.
I'm done.
And then, uh, if it goes to the next meeting, then we'll wait for everything in, and then we'll go from there on the approvals.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Jim, they complete your list, Estes Park is up next week.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we, we created, let's figure out what, what to put on.
Yeah? Again, the old days, if you spoke enough of them.
So... I don't know whether you, you talk, I, I went down to look at the lighting, we talked about that.
Um, amongst ourselves, um, you know, it's not a hearing, but I looked at it myself, too.
Is it only a done at all?
Okay.
So, we make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Show motion.
All in favor, is he gonna say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, show the, uh, vote unanimous, meeting adjourned, thank you for watching, and hold, and we'll be back on March seventh. Good night.